Hello and welcome. You're viewing the Citizens Journalist Podcast Mesa County Compass that brings you the news that you can use from a different point of view. I'm Ruth.
I'm Lisa.
And together we are Mesa County Compass. Our goal is to create an informed, current, active citizenry armed with facts. We will be covering what's new, what's new to you, what it means to you, what you can do about it, and provide you access to the decision makers when we can. Good afternoon. You're here with Mesa County Compass and this afternoon we are interviewing Ms. Andrea Heitz. She is going to be, she is our current school board president for District 51, and she has since declared that she is going to be running again. So Andrea, welcome.
Thank you.
And give us just a quick background of yourself, why you got into this and why you're continuing.
Sure. Well, thanks for having me. It's always fun to chat with you ladies. So yeah, my background is born and raised here in Grand Junction. Actually went to, well, we moved around quite a bit in my childhood. So I went to all the neighborhood schools. So Chatfield, Fruitvale, Nizzley, and then back to Fruitvale. And then went to Booklift Middle School and then graduated from Central High School. And then from there went on to Mesa State College. So part of District 51, so been a part of this community. And then leading up to obviously running for school board, I've been on several different boards and associations in the community. I was on a charter school board prior to running for school board. And I was actually going to help support a different candidate in 2021 to run for school board. And I was gonna help that individual run for school board. And then some things had kind of shifted and changed. And someone said, "Well, you know Andrea, you would be a great candidate." And I said, "No," three times, and apparently that didn't stick. And so ended up running in 2021 for school board and obviously won. So immersed myself into learning the ins and outs of running in a school district or learning the parts of the school district. It is very different, obviously scalable, right? A smaller charter school board is different than a larger school district school board. Since then, I'm also a board member for the Colorado Associations of School Boards. So I'm a Region 10 board member. So that encompasses part of the I-70 corridor from like Aspen, Glenwood, Rifle area, part of Meeker, and then the Western Slope here.
You're a busy lady.
Yeah, so we have quarterly meetings, so that one's not as demanding. But what it has afforded me is a better understanding of how education interacts with the state and a lot of the legislation. So I think it's helped us advocate better for what we need here on the Western Slope as far as what we need, you know. We all know, just generally on the Western Slope, a lot of things get missed for us just on a lot of levels, not just only in education.
Because everybody knows Denver's.
Yes, yeah, exactly. Once you get over those mountains, it just seems like people kind of forget about us in a lot of different ways. And so I wanted just to kind of make sure that I was just, you know, apprised and aware of things going on, especially in the education world at the state capital. And so being a part of CASB, the Colorado Association of School Boards, has really afforded me. And I'm on the Legislative Resolutions Committee with CASB. And so that has helped me kind of stay up to par of what's been going on, especially the last couple of years, because we've had a lot of education legislation that has been pushed down. And so part of that has been beneficial for us here in D-51, and some of that has not been beneficial for us here in D-51. And so that has helped me keep our board apprised of what's been going on. And it's also helped me have good conversations with our representatives, like Representative Tiger and Senator Rich.
Right. Well, and I would think too, then you're also apprised of what difficulties, challenges that other school districts are facing. So sometimes you think it's just us. But that helps that whole thing. So we've asked before, what does a school board member do? And what do you, what does somebody that's on your other board, what's their role with the school boards as well?
Yeah, so, yeah, so we're kind of the 30,000-foot view, you know, as a board member. Our one employee is the superintendent and then kind of a little bit of, you know, the attorney. You know, they help do some stuff obviously for the board as well. You know, but the only person that we hire and fire is the superintendent. And so I'm the president, and so I have weekly meetings with the superintendent. And then also with myself and the vice president, we then put the agenda together for our meetings. And so there's different things that I sign as far as contracts and things like that as far as the school board president is concerned. So, you know, we look, obviously, you know, some of our primary roles are the budget, curriculum, the, gosh, just administrative hires. So even though, you know, we have the superintendent hire, once the, you know, different administrative hires, both at central office and then the principal hires, those all do come before the board. And so then we also vote on those. So sometimes if you look in our packet, you'll see when we approve those hires. And so those, we don't sit in on those interviews, but those do come before the board as a final approval. And so, yeah, so then obviously, you know, throughout the year, the budget is continued to be presented to us. Anytime we have to approve a curriculum, those get presented to us. If there's a charter school that wants to be, you know, come before us, whether they want to be in the district or if they want to be relinquished to the state, that all comes before the board. And then some various other things that the board is usually, comes before the board for approval. And then obviously, you know, things that obviously have been presented to the board over the last couple of years is school closures or consolidations, things like that that the superintendent has to bring before the board. Sale of land, you know, kind of any big financial decisions that have to come before the board, you know, get presented. Obviously, bond and mill, anything that we put onto the ballot. And then, you know, big projects, things like that get brought before the board.
So what changes have you seen in the board since you've been on the board from how it was before?
Sure. So you know, one thing that was interesting is the other boards that I have been on, which, you know, years ago, I was on the Grand Junction Area Realtor Association Board. So I was a board director there years ago for about six years. So every board I've been on, there's always an onboarding process where somebody brings you on and they kind of show you the ropes and usually have a binder that kind of tells you how the meetings run and who's who and everything like that. So that didn't happen with this board, which is really interesting because, one, it's a, I mean, we are the largest employer in Mesa County. We have over a $250 million budget, so it's, you know. And so it was just really interesting. And granted, you're asking people in the community to, I mean, it's an elected position and a lot of these people, you don't, there's no qualification that you actually have to have any board experience. And so I was actually a little surprised that we didn't have any kind of onboarding process, you know, for our oncoming board members. So we revamped that, so we now actually have a total onboarding process for new board members. So we have a binder now that the, so that little interim month from when a new board member is voted in in November, and then they're sworn in right at the beginning of December. We meet with them and we work onboarding them. And so we have a binder that we go through with them. We talk to them about Robert's Rules of Order, and then we go through some policies. And then we go through the committees that the board members are on. And so, you know, we, if they don't have previous board experience, we want to make sure that they understand, like, you know, how do the board meetings run? And, you know, you know, here's what we, this is what board member does, this is what board members don't do. Because, you know, we don't get into the weeds, like the everyday operational things. You know, that's, we, the superintendent's job is, that's his job to get in and do these things. Now, you can ask questions and obviously ask how things work, but it's not our job to go and interject ourselves into certain things, like and tell principals what to do, say for instance.
You're not getting paid for that.
Exactly. Well, we don't get paid for anything. As much as some people think the board gets paid for stuff, this is a fully 100% volunteer position. Now granted, in Colorado, board members can get paid, but that has to be decided. And in Mesa County, we do not get paid. So anyway, so we kind of talk about what the roles are. Now granted, there are some, there are some roles where, you know, the board and superintendent roles kind of overlap a little bit. And so we kind of go over some of that. But what are board member roles, what are superintendent roles, and then maybe some of those where they overlap? So we just kind of outline that. And so we have a much, much better onboarding process. And so we actually did that with Director Chavez and Director Evanson when they first came on. And it was such a smooth process. And also, I would say even with like challenging political climates, it just, it brings the temperature down. If you even think that like you might have somebody coming in that if it was a little bit charged, it just, it brings a cohesiveness to the team that you just start off on the right foot regardless.
It's so much different than it used to be. Because years ago, it used to be you went on the school board and they didn't really have a lot to say one way or the other. There weren't those challenges, there weren't things that are, no huge budgets that they had to deal with.
It's kind of a fit-your-head position.
Right, exactly. That's exactly what it was. And nowadays, it's just so different. And congratulations for you, kudos to you for setting up something like that. Because otherwise, you would be just totally lost. And I understand where you were.
Yeah, well, and, yeah, because there's, obviously can be some strong opinions on things nowadays. And so you kind of want to make sure that you, that board members understand, you know, kind of where our lanes are. And also, you know, that we also have to work together as a team. You know, we only make decisions as five members, you know. Each of us can have our own opinions, but we, you know, majority rules, obviously, on votes, but no one person is going out there and can make one decision. And so, so it just kind of shows, you know, it helps the new board members understand how a board works. And it just sets us off on the right foot.
And you feel like you're, you have a cohesive board right now.
Yes, yeah, even though we, you know, even though we all have very differing opinions on things, we actually understand and have a good working relationship. And I would say respectful relationship. And that was kind of the challenge, I think, when we came in. It was a really tough footing when we first came in. And I didn't, I didn't wish that for any other board member the way that we came in. And it doesn't matter whether I agree with somebody or not agree with somebody. That was, that was not a great way to come in. And I don't wish that on any other board member who comes in after us. So I wanted to set that up differently because it, that doesn't do, that doesn't do our district good. That doesn't help our superintendent, and that all kind of trickles down, right? So you can have differing opinions and you can also be respectful to one another. And you, there should be some base rules that you can come into a board meeting and not undermine each other and not surprise each other. That doesn't mean, I mean, you can have some debate and some, and some discussion about things, but there should not, there should not be this underhandedness or this condescension that comes between board members in those discussions. And I just, if you can have a good onboarding about how you're gonna operate and work together as a board, and you do that out of the gate, it just, it just helps. So, and I would say that's true across any board.
Oh, it would too.
So we just, it just sets the tone and tenor a lot differently. And so we've done that, and so that helps. And that just helps support your superintendent too. Because if you've got a board that's not working well, your superintendent kind of gets caught in the middle. And that can be really stressful. You know, that doesn't actually help them focus on the job that they need to do, which is to lead a district. You know, they've got a, they've got a senior leadership team that they've got to lead. And if you're wanting to try to have your students achieve and have all of your leaders, you know, be great leaders that help all your students, then that's what we need to focus on. We don't need to be focusing on disagreements and bickering and things like that.
It all comes down to the students.
Yep, yeah, so and being strong leaders, so.
So in what areas then do you think you've helped students achieve with your board? That, I do see that they're coming up. And how has the board impacted that or influenced that achievement?
Well, I just think, I think being examples of strong leaders, you know, I think everything rises and falls on, on strong leaders, right? So again, showing that you can have civil disagreement, right? And the way that you handle that. Dr. Hill has been a great leader. And, you know, again, you know, we don't all agree 100% of the time. I don't know anybody who does, anywhere, right?
Not even families.
Right, not even, yeah, not even families. So, and that's a good thing, right? Because you rub each other, you, iron sharpens iron, that kind of thing, right? So, so the board does that with each other. And Dr. Hill and the board does that together. And I'm sure Dr. Hill does that with his team and, you know, and so on and so forth, right? And so what we've challenged Dr. Hill is, you know, we want him to be a good leader. We want him to pick good leaders. And we want his leaders to pick good leaders underneath him, right? And then, and then we want to hold everybody accountable. And not accountable in like a punitive way, right? But accountable in a way that like you're a good leader. And so that's the expectation the board has put out there. Because then that trickles down and that helps our students be good leaders and good students. And so I think that's the tone and tenor this board has set forth. And I think that is what we've started to kind of see trickle through the district, which is what we, you know, and part, there's a lot of pieces and parts that have come into that. You know, we've implemented the, the new reading curriculum a few years ago, which we returned to a science of reading curriculum, you know, back to phonics and things like that, which.
Rather than whole language, so other people know what their choice might be.
Exactly, exactly. So that is obviously just really helped our students. And we know that if you can, that piece just really helps our students if they can have those pieces and parts with their reading. And then that reading to comprehension. And that helps them as they just progress through, you know, their, their schooling. And so, and then we've just worked through different pieces of curriculum that we have approved over the years. And so just those pieces and parts have really helped. Actually, our community has asked for increased rigor, which is interesting.
That's good.
This actually, our meeting on Tuesday with our new strategic plan, the community that came together with the strategic plan is asking for even a little bit more increased academic rigor, which is, is good. And, you know, I think that can show up in a little bit different ways. Not just that it needs to be more complex, but I think just that, that can show up in different ways. And again, maybe even that's just accountability with students. And so we're working on some things that way. And so yes, this year, we had the highest graduating class. Last year, we had the highest graduating class then. And so we're starting to see a lot of really good things happen. Now granted, there's still some challenges that we still need to work through and, you know, student groups and different things that we're needing to help with. And we are, and we're honing in and trying to see what are some of the causes and things that we need to hone in on and help in those groups. And so I think we're getting, we're fine tuning those pieces so that we know exactly how to help, you know, is it access, is it opportunity? Like, what do we need to do to help, you know, with particular, you know, students or, you know, whatever it might be? Is it, you know, if it's at a certain school or, you know, whatever it might be, so.
So is that something that's handled more in the community? So the committee comes and then presents to the board and said, "These are the pieces." And I know that, I remember you showing us the binder and there's a bunch of committees and everybody serves on some. So what are some that you think have had the biggest challenges of the committees and then successes? I know your curriculum has been one that with the fourth grade curriculum.
Yeah, that was.
Social studies. So how did that come out? And what was the feeling of the board regarding the curriculum?
Yeah, so, yeah, so the board doesn't, we don't, there's not really a curriculum committee that the board sits on. There's, there's a different committee that senior leadership sits on. And then they have obviously some different teams and staff that sits on that committee. And then they bring that recommendation to the board. And so, you know, that was presented to the board and the board gets all of that curriculum. And we, you know, we look it over. And then we obviously have brought back some things that were of concern. And then, you know, we, we presented just what those concerns were. And, and obviously, you know, some people in the community were wondering why we didn't just take the recommendation, just, I guess, a bit, I would say blindly. I think there's some, there's some confusion in that the board, the board does listen to the recommendation of these committees, but in some of these committees, they're, the board is also another layer of, of, you know, I guess, eyes or a lens that is supposed to look at all of this. And so it's not, you know, I think I even went into one of the meetings to say, it's not, it's just because the board doesn't necessarily agree with the recommendation does not mean that it's a, it's an insult or a disrespect to the committee or the committee's work. Because I think there was a narrative kind of going around about that. But it's, it's a different view, right? Because there's, there's a view that we bring in from the community. And so I think sometimes people forget that the board wears a few different hats, right? Where, the board is a conduit between the district and the community because we are the elected officials. And so I think sometimes people think that the board works for the district, but we don't. Now, sometimes we represent the district in some ways. But we don't, we're not employees of the district. We're elected officials that, you know, sit on a board that help, but we're really a conduit. And so we are that other lens that, that brings a different perspective in, which could be a parent perspective, a community perspective, a taxpayer perspective. It's a lot of different perspectives when we're looking at finances, curriculum, you know, a lot of different things when we have to look at these recommendations that these committees bring before the board. So when this curriculum was brought before us, it wasn't to necessarily say that the committee had done a bad job looking at it, but there were some pieces and parts in the fourth grade curriculum that, you know, in my personal opinion, I felt were not, they were not age appropriate. Now, some people were saying that we were trying to censor. There was, I never once used those words. I said it wasn't age appropriate. Now, age appropriate is different in saying that like talking to a kid in fourth grade about this topic is different than talking to the kid maybe at eighth grade when their mind is a little bit more mature to talk about this topic at eighth grade. And that's what I was saying, was like, I think this is a little bit more of a complex issue. And I think that this is a more robust conversation to have when the child is older versus say having this at, you know, when they're age 10. And so sure, there was a couple of us board members that had a very different view on this. And when it boils down to that, it's like, well, if you want to have that conversation at home with your kid, then great, you as the parent get to do that. That's the beauty of, you know, as the parent, you are the first authoritative person to be able to do that with your family. But when it comes to the school, you know, looking at that and, you know, and our teachers, and again, we also have to remember that our teachers only have so much time in the day to be able to pick and choose kind of what it is that they get to be able to look over and what pieces and parts they get to present to our kids. And so, you know, there's, so there's a lot of pieces and parts to that as well. And so, yeah, so there was a kind of a lot of things that went into it. And part of that also just, some of that felt a little forced into the book, into that fourth grade piece. And in, in like even Director Evanson kind of felt like there was a lot of missing citations, you know. So if you're wanting to have actually a good curriculum book, you should also have a lot of, like, you know, where are you getting your sources? And there was, and a lot of that was missing. So a lot of people tried to just pin it, that it was opinion and, and things like that. And again, I was just using one example. There was several other things that we could have gone into that there was questions about the resource. And, and again, you know, we, I had offered anybody who was asking about it. I was like, "I'm happy to sit down with you and I'll, I'll tell you all the concerns I had about the resource." But they had only heard like the one thing that, that we had had concerns about. But there was too much to carve out in the resource that that, the board had just asked, "Can you give us, can you look at another recommendation and come back and tell us what you think?" And so they did. There was another recommendation that we looked at. And there was even, you know, I could say, say from the activism piece, there was something else in there. And I thought that activism piece was actually a little more age appropriate than, again, the one conversely. And it kind of fit more in that fourth grade context. And again, it wasn't that I was against the activism piece. It was more of like what, what works for a fourth grader to read? And what fits more for them to digest, you know, maybe at a later date? And again, it wasn't to whitewash it or whatever people were saying. It's just like, what are they gonna actually digest? And, and I will say this, I, we, we want kids to grow up way too quickly. We got a lot of emails about people saying, "Well, they're seeing it on the internet and TV anyways." Well, maybe, I mean, maybe some, some kids are. And even if they are, I don't know that that's really our job as a district or a board to determine that. You know, I, I'm not gonna presume to kind of take that place of a parent. And I, and I think it's our job that at each grade level, we need to let kids be kids for as long as they can. Once that genie's out of the bottle, you know, then that genie's out of the bottle. Kids can't unsee or undo or unhear those things. And there's so much stuff going on in this world right now that, you know, if a parent chooses to share those things with their kids, then that's the parent's job. That is not our job as, as, you know, the district to share more heavy things. Now granted, you know, we do talk about slavery, you know, at certain levels in school. I'm not saying that our kids are not learning about those things. But sometimes some of these things, again, it was, you know, the piece I was talking about was Black Lives Matter, which was a very contentious thing that happened in 2020. And you are talking about, you know, someone, a very intense situation that happened. And, you know, for a 10-year-old, you know, I just, I feel like that's something more of a parent needs to broach with their child. And I just feel at fourth grade, if we're talking about Colorado history, I think there's a lot of other things that we could be going over at fourth grade. And if we want to talk about that movement, to me, that seems like that could be something that could be held at a later date. And again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't talk about it. That just seems to me like a more mature conversation to have with kids when they're older.
I think you've got the whole thing right there. People tend to forget how old their children are. They want to push their values onto their child before the child's ready. And it, they expect the school to be able to do the same thing, and it just doesn't work that way.
Well, you know, and I, and I've talked to some of our high school teachers and they said that kids are coming to school and they're extremely angry and they can't even really pinpoint like why they are. And I would just tell, and, and again, I'm speculating, but I would just say that because of social media and, you know, the phone that kids carry around and constant, you know, inundation of like news and TikTok and social media, our kids, our, our kids are exposed to way more news and information than we ever were.
Well, it's not necessarily news too. It's a lot of opinion and propaganda too.
Sure, yeah, drama.
Drama, because that's more exciting.
Well, yeah, and, and so I would just say that, you know, maybe at age 10, maybe we could pump the brakes a little bit and just like, yeah, let kids learn about Colorado history. I mean, that was kind of just my point was like, at, at fourth grade, if the state standard is for them to learn about Colorado history, then let's let them learn about Colorado history. And yeah, let's let them learn about the Sand Creek massacre. I mean, I'm not, I wasn't saying that they shouldn't learn about the Native Americans and the things that happened in Colorado. At the same time, there's some other heavier things that they can learn about maybe when they're a little bit older. And I just, I just think that, you know, we need to let our kids just stay kids as long as they can because, and we're, kids are having to grow up a lot faster these days. Again, for a lot of other reasons too. And, and again, if a parent wants their kid to grow up faster, that's their, that's their job. But from the school district standpoint, we just need to, to teach to the standard. And the standard in fourth grade was for Colorado history, and we needed to keep it at that. And so this other piece just kind of felt. This other piece just kind of felt shoved in with this other piece of curriculum. And so, so that was one of the committees that was presented to the board. You know, so there's some other committees as well. The Safety and Security Committee. Um, we have a really great new head of Safety and Security, Andy Means, and he has been really revamping a lot of stuff and. You know, so I have to say that I'm super excited about what he is doing with our schools. You know, he presented a few weeks ago. Um, with just some different things that he's wanting to do. And obviously, we know that safety, physical safety and security. Is really top of mind for a lot of people. And I think there's a lot of things that we're gonna need to continue to work on. You know, just in that arena. Um, I do, I will have to say though, I think. It's probably gonna be something we have to go back out and ask our community for a mill levy. Um, we do not get monies from the state for, you know, safety and security. Yeah. I mean, it just, it costs money, right? It costs money to have, you know, safety and security, you know, you, people. Um, and it'd be, you know, we need people in schools. And I'm thankful for the, you know, police department and the sheriff's department that they work with us, but, you know. We've got to have people in our schools and also there's just the technology. And so.
retrofitting everything is just expensive.
But also when the state is, you know, constricting our budget, we, you know, it's.
And then demanding more things to be done.
Well, and then you get unfunded mandates from the dist- or from the state. You know, they, they give you a mandate that of something you have to do, but they don't give you the money to do it. It's like, well, we have to figure out a way to do it. So then. What, the challenge is, is there's things like safety and security and other things that we have to do or that we wanna do. Then we just don't always have the money. So unfortunately, I think. Fortunately, unfortunately, there's, I think there's some things that we're gonna have to go back out and ask our community to help support. Um, you know, like safety and security that we're gonna need to have some money for, which, you know, again. Those are things that directly go to protect our kids and those dollars would directly go into either. Safety and security officers and technology. And again, from the board standpoint, we're making sure that we're. Making sure our dollars are efficient and used really wisely, so that if we do make an ask, we can show them that we have. We have been really strategic with all of our dollars when, if and when that time comes, you know.
Everything transparent.
Well, and you've had other areas, you've got the MBEA right now and thinking that. Yeah, and it, it does come down a lot of it to money. You, you can only, when you're saying we need to close a school. Part of that, I think people don't understand is that's state regulated too. And that you only have those many dollars, you can't go back to your money tree and go pick it, which you might like to. So how is that going? And, uh, and I know one comment that I heard was not, not from the, anybody, but it was. You didn't bring anything to the meetings all the way along to say, this is something that we're looking at and then. All of a sudden, just try to make it's us versus them. So how do you see that?
Sure. So, yeah, so with MBEA, the Mesa Valley Education Association, um. So we're at an impasse right now. Uh, basically, you know, we had. Had a few meetings and, and got to the end of the three meetings. You can't, you can't actually ask for an impasse until we've actually sat for three meetings. And we got to the end of those three meetings and then we were able to come to any kind of agreement. So. The way it works is each party can bring two items to the table each year and salary is always on, on the table. So, um, as a district or the district in admin, we, um, we really didn't have too many items that we brought up this year. Um, there's a couple of things that we're um, doing some studies on uh, over the next year. Um, one of those being. When our staff wants to, let, let's just say they need to take like an hour or two to go to like a doctor's appointment or an appointment. They actually have to get a sub for either a half day or a whole day. And so then they have to plan for that. And so, we were trying to see if there's a way that um, they could just take an hour or two off and then come back. So it does, uh, but we're not sure the logistics of that and how complicated it could be. And how does that work with subs? And so, we presented that, but it does take us a year in HR and everything to see. What does that look like? And so that was one thing we presented and we're gonna do a study on it this year to see. Would that be easier? Cause a lot of our teachers said, I'd love to just go pop out for an hour or two and then come back and finish my day. And so.
And you don't wanna have another teacher trying to cover you. That's what we did.
Yeah, exactly. And so, um, so we're gonna try to see what that works, that looks like. And so we presented that we're gonna look into that. So, um, MBEA presented that they wanted to look at classroom size and then um, classroom safety. You know, just with behavioral issues. So, um, Director Lima and I, um, were on the IRPAC committee. It's the Educational Resource and Professional Committee. I think that's the acronym. So basically, it's, it's a committee where the two, there's two board members. Um, our finance, HR, uh, Dr. Hill meet with the negotiation teams. Um, minus our attorney, Tammy was not there, um, meet with the majority of the negotiation team with the association. We met January, February and March. So we had, we met each month. So. They had, they had two board members years for three months. And so. There was nothing that we needed to bring to talk to them about at each of those meetings. So we waited. Um, each month asking for them to present, like what did they wanna talk about as far as. Classroom size and, you know, behavioral issues. So each month we kept, we were waiting to, for them to present, you know, a number, you know, like. Did they want twenty four kids per class, twenty five, twenty six? Because with the number, then sometimes there's gonna be, you know, a financial tie to that, because if you cap. If you cap the class out at a certain amount, then that would trigger. Then having to pro- provide another teacher once that class was capped out. So. That was never presented, at least in our committee. Now, there's other committees as well. There's Finance Committee and some other ones. So as far as I, no, none of that was ever presented in those committees. Also, as far as the behavioral safety issues, that was never presented in the committee that Director Lima and I sat in on.
And so were you, I'm sorry to interrupt, but were you asking them to come up with a plan?
Well, we were, we were, we were wondering what they wa- wanted. So.
You can't do anything without knowing.
Well, right. I don't know, we didn't, I didn't know what they wanted. Like what number, what number were they asking for? Like give, either give me a range, like what's, what's a good classroom range that you wanted? I, I mean, I don't know whether you guys want twenty kids in your class or twenty five or, you know. Give, give us something to start with, cause then we have to take those numbers back to. Either to Mel, our CFO, and then they have to tell us like, okay, that then bumps us to another. You know, amount of FTE people that we have to hire. And then with the behavioral, it's like, okay, are you saying, do you want us to put another person in the classroom? Is there something that we did years ago that worked? I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, I actually, so then I actually started asking some people that have been in the district a long time. I said. Was there something that we did years ago with, you know, kids that, you know, and they said that we used to have behavior specialists in um, schools. That used to come around and um, they would come in and they would help. And then I guess we didn't, we don't have those anymore. And they said that those helped. So maybe that worked in those schools. So then I said, I said, well, when did we do away with those? So that was never presented. So I started, I don't know. So then I just started asking around, but none of this was ever presented. At least in the meetings that Director Lima and I were in.
That sounds like you spent a lot of time wasted then, without having any results.
Well, I, I don't, I guess my, my point is, and I'm, I'm not trying to like disparage them, but nothing was ever pres- I don't know what their ask was. Like, what do you want? Like, what is your ask? Do you want extra people in the classroom?
We can't help until you tell us.
Right. Are you wanting, like, what, what is the issue of the behavior in the classroom? And what are you wanting us to do with it? And so, and then, or at least just like tell us something and then we can start the conversation. And then the conversation could have been happening in the committee. And then like some things could have started to transpire. And we all know that when you start having the conversation in committee. That's where you have the committee work happen. And then, just like at a board meeting, then you go and present to the board. You don't start doing committee work at the board meeting. And so. So then the night of the twenty fifth, and again, at this point, I know, I know this year, everyone's like, well, we wanted the board at the meetings. Well. The board has not been at negotiations for two years. And again, we've explained why we weren't. Because two years ago, when we gave them the extra sped day, that came back to bite us. Um, because we, we wanted to have one day where they had a sped day. Um, and then one day was a district, you know, training sped day. And that it didn't work out the way that we had, the board had intended it to be. And so again, this was when Director Levinson and Director Schultes was on there and they even agreed that. It was not a great idea that we were, you know, that the board was at the table. So again, this was not my idea. This was something, again, all five board members have to decide. And then even when Director Chavez and Director Evanson came on, we said, listen, this is how we, you know, the board does it. And they both agreed as well. They said, no, this makes sense. And again, we're an outlier. I called CASB and said, hey. Districts that do collective bargaining, do their boards sit at the table? And they said, no. Some, their superintendents don't even sit at the table. Durango, their superintendent doesn't even sit at the negotiation table. So we were an outlier, uh, and I get it, it changed somewhere along the lines years ago. And. You know, and I'm sure there's, you know, good and bad either way. But, but again, it's, it, this is not, this is, it's not a. You know, it's not something that I guess is a normal thing. And so, um, you know, I guess for it to be so focused on. Um, I get it, change is hard and it's different, but this is, this is, it's, it's sort of not. Um, the, the normal way that it's done. And, and again. We're the laypeople, this is not the, we're not the ones that do the negotiations. And so. Um, at, at least typically boards across the state. So anyways, um. So we, there was a lot of talk about that this year. And again, we haven't been sitting at the table now for a couple of years. And so. When the night of the twenty fifth came, we, they presented, MBEA presented. Five pages of language around classroom size and behaviors that we had never seen.
Great.
Well, and so that, so we were confused because we had sat there for three months. And then nothing was ever presented. And then the first night, that, there was five pages of language. So then, our team said, we're not gonna meet on Saturday because. Why, now you're wanting to take committee work that should have been done three or four months prior to. And sit all day Saturday and work on it? Well, that doesn't work for our team. Because curriculum, finance and even legal. This, they have to go back to all of their teams, which now are not at, they're not in the office. And they gotta go back and look at all the numbers. You gotta go back and look at all the law. You gotta go back and look at everything. And we have to take all of that and dissect it. This takes lots of time to work through. You can't just now sit in the room for eight hours and then try to work through it. Now granted, I, I get that, that, that was what they asked for. But now what you're trying to do is take committee work and basically now try to do it at the time when you're supposed to be at the time. Really kind of finessing it, which is what we had done in years past. And so, they were not particularly pleased that they, we canceled the Saturday. Because our team, at that point, there was nothing we could really do.
Well, and this seems to me like it's a little bit like we'd like to see with city council where you don't get this. Fire engine right at the end and say, make a decision right now. You get some time to look at pieces of it, process it. Get some understanding, think about it, and then make a decision. So with this impasse, what does that mean? What's gonna happen?
Right. So, um, so in between, there were supposed to be some other meetings that, um. We had, well, that our team and MBEA had tried to come together on meeting on and for various reasons. We could, they just couldn't come together on meeting on those. And so, um. So then we had two other meetings where, you know, our team and MBA met for negotiations. And at that point, our curriculum team came back and told them the numbers. That when they finally gave us some student numbers, um, you know, twenty five, twenty six kids, what, I don't, I can't remember the exact number. Well, when they, we just ran the numbers K through eight, it was twelve million dollars. If we just, uh, in FTE, of just if we were to do it. And so, then they asked us what our counter was. Well, we don't have a counter, cause.
We don't have twelve million dollars.
Well, no, cause we don't. I mean, so, so, but this was, if this could have all been discussed earlier in those previous months. We could have then started to be like, okay, what, what could we do? And then also with behavioral issues. Um, there's also stuff in committee and there's also stuff the district's working on that, um. We couldn't necessarily talk about in a public meeting that we're working on, that we could have discussed in committees. Because, um, some of it has to deal with personnel that we're trying to deal with, with behavioral stuff and things that we're trying to do. In those regards, that we can't necessarily discuss right now in a public meeting. And if they would have. We, the conversation didn't even get started. That's why, I, I don't know what they wanna ask, so I can't tee up the conversation. Because I don't, I don't know what their concern was. So when they say we never brought anything up. I don't know what to bring up, because I didn't know what their concern was. I don't know what their number was. And I didn't know what behaviors there were. I'm not the one in the classroom. I, so I didn't even know where to begin to ask what they wanted. Like, we kept waiting, I mean, we asked them, what, what number would you guys like to talk about? What, what is it you guys wanted to ask with behaviors? We kept asking them. So then, now with impasse. So per the agreement, um, each party has to agree to, um, now mediation. So Kayla, who was our facilitator, is now, both parties have agreed for her to be our mediator. Now mediation is not done in public. And so now there's a date in July, um, that is picked. And so she will sit down at the table with both parties and hopefully, we can, uh, get that done in one day. And so then we'll just do mediation, um, just like normal mediation. And hopefully that can get done, um, in one day, so. But now, the challenge is, is these, these things now probably will have to get, some of these things will have to probably now get pushed to next year. Which is a little frustrating, because I think we could have actually probably got some of these things done had we started a conversation. Back in January. And, and again, I know, I know I got a little flack, um, at the meeting a few weeks ago when I, when someone said the board's not showing. You know, the board hasn't done anything. It's like, well, I've been at meetings both January, February and March. And I don't know what meetings they were saying the board wasn't at. Because I was at meetings with MBEA all three of those months. And there was nothing ever presented to us. So I, unless there were other meetings they wanted us at, I, I don't know what.
And didn't tell you.
Well, I, I don't know. Well, or, or, I mean, a- again, I don't know. I mean, but they, but MBA had two board members, basically. You know, undivided attention. And, and I would have been willing to have met more time had we started something. And if we were really getting into something, again, my time is probably my most precious commodity. And we sat there and waited and we were, and nothing was happening. And again, I was willing to give it. Because I, I, I wanted to hear from them. Again, I didn't, I didn't show up just because. I showed up because. I had agreed to this, I had committed to it. And so, when people say that like, we weren't committed to it and it didn't mean anything. That's absolutely one hundred percent wrong. We showed up, I showed up to every single one of those meetings. Every time it was planned. I did not miss one of those IRPAC meetings. And I was there, I was fully present and I waited. And again, my time is my most precious commodity. I take it away from my family, I take it away from my business. I take it away from anything else I could be doing. And again, I committed to it because I did wanna hear from our teachers. I wanted to hear what it was that was important to them. And I would have given more time had we started even a conversation. But then, when the night of, we finally get the language, I, it's a, it's a little bit too late. Cause now we're in April and then I don't, it's like, now what do you want us to do with it? So to me, that is a little bit frustrating. Because now, now we're ninety to hundred and twenty days now into like, you know, it's, it's just, it's late.
So just out of curiosity, how many hours do you think that took out of your time?
Well, so each of those months, we were, each of those months, there was an hour set aside for the, so that was at least three or four hours. And then, um, and then we prepped because we had agenda time. And then, and then. The board was apprised of different information, um, leading into those. So, I mean, easily four to six hours. The board was apprised of different information, um, leading into those, so, I mean, easily four to six hours.
Well, and you spend thirty hours easily every week on board.
Yeah, twen- twenty to thirty.
Consider, this is without a paycheck. Come on, people.
Which I knew that, which I knew that going in.
Admirable of you or anybody else that runs for the school board. Yeah, exactly. And you do it because you have a heart for that.
I know, so for, you know, I guess the frustration is for when people say that, you know, that we don't care. And for people to say that we don't wanna give our teachers a raise. I mean, I'm sorry, for, for it being an election year. Uh, if, why would we not give a raise on a year when I'm running for reelection? That wouldn't make any sense. I mean, and there will be a raise. You know, if you're mad, I mean, go, it's the state. We don't make our own money. It's the state, we get most of our money from the state. The state has missed, really mismanaged dollars. They've not prioritized educational dollars, um. You know, we do, we are pumping the brakes this year, because we do have to make sure that, you know. Salaries are reoccurring dollars. And yes, our reserves are higher than they have been. But reserves are one-time dollars. And you cannot take dollars for salaries out of reserves. Because then our reserves will be gone in no time. And reserves are what give us a softer landing. In the event that the state does, I mean, we're, we're at a, we're gonna be at a four-year state averaging this year. And we could be at a three-year state averaging next year. And, and, and the governor is wanting us to do that. He is wanting to get all of the districts. To have no more averaging. And, and that really does then affect a lot of school districts as far as our funding. Because that's how we, that's, uh, the averaging is how we sort of, um. Square up our budgets. And it gives us a little bit of a buffer, but if you do that a little too fast, y- we lose money. And then on top of declining enrollment. It's, it's really painful. And so, that's why this year with the increase of insurance. The increase of our transportation, um, uh, uh, contract with the busing. And then there's increase in food costs for nutrition services. We have a lot of things hitting us this year as far as increasing costs. And so, that's why we, I mean, we're still short a hundred and forty thousand dollars in squaring up our budget. So we are, we're taking some dollars, we would, we really wanted to make sure we were able to give our staff a raise. It's not necessarily the way that they want it to be, but they will get a raise. So we're looking at everything we can next year to make sure that we can try to do it the way that, that they want. But we gotta take some time to make sure that we can get all of our stuff together this year. Assuming the state's not gonna have their stuff together, so that we can find the recurring dollars, right? It, it, and I get it, that it's just, you can't take one-time dollars to do an ongoing expense. It's just, you just can't. And so, my, cuz my greater concern, and this is of the board and administration, is. I would rather people have their job and have maybe just a little bit less pay or have a, wait a little bit. Than people not having a job at all.
Could be coming.
It makes me nervous, because that means people lose their homes and other things that. It, this, that is much more impactful than just a little, a little bit of discomfort right now. Which again, they're still gonna get a raise this year. There, there will still be a raise. So, uh, you know, the, I get it, it's not, it's not the best. Um, but there'll still be something. And we're still trying to plan that we can do a raise next year, even with the worst case scenario. So we're trying to still plan for even next year. So, because again, I, I get that it's no fun when you do a job. And you feel like you're not getting rewarded. And so we've been still trying to plan for next year in the event that the governor does. We go down to three-year averaging. So, again, and we're still trying to plan. You know, again, cinch our belt and control what we can control, estimating that we'll get less even from the di- the state next year. So, uh, you know, we're, we're trying to plan all of these things and make sure that we can have a buffer in case there's an issue. And we have a softer landing, cuz I don't want anybody to lose their job. Because that is way more detrimental than anything else. Because that means it affects their, their spouse, their kids. I mean, you know, an entire family than just a little bit of discomfort that, you know. And again, this, this is not just affect teachers. That means that like, you know, other admin, it, it's across the board. You know, so that, it's not just for them, it means it affects everybody. So, um, you know. I don't want them to think it's just, it's just our teachers that get affected. It, it's everybody, so.
And what new laws have passed that are gonna be difficult, you think, for the school district in the coming years?
Well.
Uh, just the nelly negative. But I, I do wanna say one, one really positive thing. I thought the cell phone thing was brilliant. And I think that that worked really well, so. Kudos to you guys.
Yeah, the cell phone one is gonna be, I mean, that one is really great to the point that obviously, we've even gained, um, some state notoriety. You know, other districts are asking how we. Just how we implemented it, cuz we got buy-in. We got buy-in from our students and our principals and our community. And, um, so, you know, do, I have to give kudos to Dr. Hill and, and all the principals and everybody for how they implemented it. So, that's been really good. And even, you know, CEI, the Colorado Education Institute, they wrote a white paper on it. So now there's like a whole how-to on it, so, yeah, that's been really good. And, and honestly, we've gotten great feedback on it. You know, students are engaging, they're talking to each other. Kids, kids are actually taking their own agency now. And putting their phones away. And even now after school, and they're actually calling their friends and asking to hang out rather than. Just talking to their friends on the phone. They're now asking their friends to get together and hanging out. So. I love that, because that was our greater goal, was for kids to reconnect that way. Um, obviously, our gift was for them to get that time back with their teachers in class. Um, but the, the greater gift is that they, they connect together, right? With their families, with their friends. And so. I hope that bleeds over to us adults. I think that's what we need, right? Um, so that was good. Um, you know, thirteen, twelve, um. The, is gonna be a challenge, um, with the, uh, the discrimination. Uh, I, I don't know how that is going.
Parents were looking at, what does?
Well, the custody thing with parents and then, because the district already gets, um. We already get caught a lot in the middle of custody issues. And so I don't know how that is going to then translate to be in the middle. Um, with that kind of stuff. And I also worry about how that could work with, um, compelled speech. And protecting just people's own, I guess, religious, you know, convictions and stuff. And so, I honestly, I mean, that's gonna bleed over into a lot of things just generally. I don't. I don't know how that will affect, um, necessarily educational policy. Um, we'll just have to see. I, I haven't heard anything how that will play into any policies that will have to change. Um, you know, I don't know if that will come into the non-legal name change policy. That, uh, districts had to adopt, you know, last year, if that will affect that one. Um, you know, cuz if, if kids could. Do that without parental notification, um, we'll, we'll just have to see. We try to do everything we can. To make sure parents know about things. Because the, the greater concern is that. If so, if, if a student starts getting bullied because of a choice a student makes and a parent doesn't know. And then, there's, um, some suicidality or some other things that happen. We just, we need to make sure that families and people are aware of what's going on. So, so students have the support that they need. And so, uh, we're very cognizant of making sure that, um. That people are aware and involved, so. Yeah, the, these things are really tough. And I think for, from my standpoint, I just want our community to understand. What the state pushes down on the district. This is not stuff that the district decides. This is stuff that we have to do because it is state law. And so sometimes our hands are tied, um, because this is what the state is, is we have to do.
Exactly.
And if you wanna make that change, you need to change.
Who's, who's in charge?
So, anything that we've missed, cuz we just, we, we would talk to you all day. Stop listening to us. But is there anything that we've missed that you wanted to tell us that you think is important? Or, you know, I, I know that good leadership, and I, I do believe you've been a great leader. You're running again, and that's another commitment, cuz that election will be in November. And so that's something to look forward to. But anything that you wanna point out that we need to know about, or?
You know, I just, I would just say that I think we're, I think to boil it down is I think we're in a better spot than we were four years ago. And what I boil it down to is that, you know, um, while there's still always work to, to do, right? But our, our curriculum and our academics are headed in the right trajectory, right? And so the curriculum supports that, right? Because our reading, our reading scores and our other scores are, you know, all increasing. Um, you can see that in the performance level of our schools and even the outcomes of our testing. Um, you can see our graduation rates are increasing. Um, and then. You can see that our finances, even though we've had the challenges of consolidating schools, you can see that we're in a really good position. To the point that even when we went to go sell this last bond that we passed in November. Because our reserves were good and our financial positioning, we, um. Basically like our credit rating, like, you know, what we would have, we were so, we were in such a good position. We got a really great rate on the bond market. So, that's really, really important, um, to try to put in layman's terms. It's like, we basically have a really good credit rating as a district. When a lot of other districts are going down, in basically their credit rating, we are in a really good position. And that's because we have good reserves and we've done a really good job with our finances. And so those things really matter, because when we go out and we ask for bond and mills. Those things matter when you go back to the bond market to sell those. And so, all of these things are intertwined. And so if we didn't have the reserves and other things, that can affect you, um, in those other ways. So, so. Yeah, academics, curriculum, um, finances, I'd say just the cohesiveness of the board. Even though, you know, a lot of us have different opinions and thoughts on things, um, we work really well together and we're respectful of each other. Um, you know, we have good leadership, um, you know, we, we are hiring some really great prin- principals this next year. For, um, some of our high schools and, uh, you know, uh, our other schools and, you know, we're. Gosh, we did a long-range facilities plan, you know, the twenty-five-year plan for all of our buildings, every single one. So now our community knows that we have a better plan going forward. Um, so instead of these willy-nilly asks. They know that there's a plan now, um, to just, here's what it is with our buildings and here's the plan and. They know exactly, like, here's the roofs, here's the HVACs, here's where everything is. And then, we're looking at all of our holdings, and so if we sell any of those, those monies go back into those capital projects. And then, we've just been more diligent with all of our projects and money savings and those, how those monies go back in. Um, you know, the utility projects that we've done, where we've saved over four hundred thousand dollars on utilities. By just timing, turning on and off our heat and cooling, um, four hundred thousand dollars. And then just.
Somewhere else.
Well, yeah, well, it just, it just saves lots of, it just saves our money just on all of our buildings. And then. Uh, and then just going through and just double-checking all of our billing with our utility companies. So Keegan in our operations department is just doing a fantastic job there. So. Um, so yeah, there's just a lot of, a lot of great things that we're doing in every department. I would say finances, curriculum, operations. You know, and then, you know, we, we still have some challenges of like absenteeism that we need to try to get kids to just. You know, and families to just commit their kids to getting into school and, 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 and what is it? We need to figure out like, you know. What can we do to get the kids to wanna be in school and stay in school? So we're working on some of those challenges. Um, you know, and then, uh, you know, continuing to work with, you know, just, uh, concurrent options for kids. And things like that which are exciting and, um, yeah, I think there's just, there's a lot of really great things, I think. You know, that are still happening and, you know, and then, and there's still gonna be some challenges that will, you know, just from the state and things like that, but.
Will be always.
But yeah, but I mean, I don't, you know, but we'll just, we'll just take them in stride as we go and we'll just do the best that we can and, and be good stewards of our dollars. And, um, but.
And I also wanna point out that you are always available. If somebody says, I don't like what's going on. That you'll talk to him and, and tell him.
Always.
You know, go, go through, well, what's your concern? What's your idea? And this is what we're doing and this is why. I think that when you could tell somebody why something is going this way right now. And if you have an idea that we could implement. Bring it. And it's, it's people individually. And I think that they feel, if you feel heard, then it's gonna be a lot better too.
Yeah, I've always told, I've always offered to people if they wanna email and, you know, I'll, I'll take them to coffee or get an iced tea or whatever. Um, very few tend to wanna take me up on it. And even if they wanna bring a friend, um, you know, I, you know, I. I, I always wanna make sure there's a dialogue. And if they wanna, you know, offer, you know, something to. Or just ask questions. I, I get that people can be frustrated or, I, I. You know, I, I wanna make sure that they feel like they can express their concern. May- maybe I can explain maybe a misunderstanding or. Uh, bring some perspective to it. Or, or I can just hear their concerns, you know. Maybe there's something I can do about it, maybe there's something I can't. Uh, maybe I can make, give them a connection to something, right? I, I don't know what it is. But we can't do anything about it if, if we can't at least have a conversation about it. And so, um, I will always meet with somebody. Um, if they wanna have a civil conversation, I, you know, always, always will. You know, I met with lots of parents around the school closures. I, I tried to meet with as many people as possible. Um, and I, and I will always do that.
So you wanna give us an email address where they can email you? I won't let you put out your phone number right now.
Well, I mean, you can find it pretty much anywhere. My, yeah, my district email is, um, is A Heights at D five one schools dot org. So A H A I T Z at D five one schools dot O R G. So, yes. Or, or if you just go to D five one schools dot org and go over to the board, you can find any of our emails, um, there. And again, I, I, being the conduit, um, between the community and the district. You know, I, I do feel like it's my job to make sure that we hear our community and listen to those. Um, you know, listen to our community. So, and not just in the boardroom. Um, you know, I do try to get out as much as I can to the community and listen to people. And not make sure that they only come on Tuesdays to the meetings.
But sometimes it's really hard to get into the meetings.
Well, and, and even in just a, a politically charged environment, you know, when we can have a conversation, it's, it's hard. You know, someone told me early on, it's, it's, it's hard to hate up close. You know, so when you can have a conversation with someone, you'll realize that there's probably more you'll agree on than, that you don't. And so, um, you know, I would rather try to work with somebody on some things and try to come together with solutions. And not have it be a fight. I mean, I'm, it, it doesn't help our students, it doesn't help our community. I'm not about the drama, I'm not about the fight. Yeah, I, I have strong principles and opinions on things. And I'm more than happy to share with you what those are. I, you know, I'm also a fairly common sense reasonable person. I mean, the way I'm talking right now with you all is how I pretty much talk with everybody. I, you know, but I'll tell you why. I, you know, why I'm principled on certain things. And so, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna yell at people. I, I don't. That's obviously not constructive. And so, you know, again, for people who say that they don't wanna meet with me cuz it's intimidating, then fine. Bring two or three of your friends and I'll come by myself. I, you know, I, I'd rather, again, have a conversation than not. And so. Um, but you know, I know there's people out there that just would rather stay behind a keyboard or something and, and not have a conversation. And that's fine, that's their prerogative. Um, but for those of us that tr- care about our community and wanna move forward, um. I'm all about that. And, um, I think there's more of us that wanna do that than not, so. Yeah, and I'm, and that's what I'm about. And that's why, you know, I'll run for reelection is because there's some good work to still do. And, and like I said. We're better than we were four years ago. And I know with the new strategic plan, we're gonna follow that again. You know, we have the five-year plan, and we're gonna move forward with that. And even in the midst of the challenging decisions we've made. Um, we're still gonna move. And we're gonna move forward with that, and even in the midst of the challenging decisions we've made, um, we're still gonna move this district forward, and. You know, my, when I came into this, I wanted D fifty-one to be the best school district in Colorado, and even, even in. You know, the nation, and, and I, that is still my goal, is I wanna be number one in Colorado, and I wanna be a shining light, you know, as far as. An exemplary school district in the Colorado and in, and even in our nation of, you know, what we could do as a public school district, so. That's my goal.
Well, you've been watching this county compass, this is the facts as we know them, the truth as we see it, you decide, thanks.
Thank you, Andrea.
Thanks, guys.